Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us as a city and our residents. We ask you to help those residents in our city and others who are struggling financially. We ask you to give us the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are all the blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigiel?
Here.
Dr. Wibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have you here. We're sorry we're getting started a few minutes late. I promise you, we've been here since four o'clock working on city business, so we haven't been sloughing off, but we're sorry to make you wait up here. The process which we will follow this evening is, the first thing we're going to do is we have a public hearing. We'll do that first, and then we have the consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda, I think. We can vote on them in one vote unless some council member wants something considered separately. Then we'll move to the regular agenda, and we have a number of regular agenda items tonight. We'll vote on all of these matters on just the way they're numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. All you have to do, and some of you have done that, is, the clerk has made a slip of paper available in the chambers, in the area behind the council chambers, before the meeting began, the lobby back there, and we've got to have a signed slip of paper from you before we can call your name. We do have one presentation tonight from Lucy Ott, the Chair of Norfolk's Relay for Life, and Catherine Burby, and would you like to come to the podium? We'd be glad to hear from you there with the American Society, right?
American Cancer Society.
Right. I'm sorry, American Cancer Society, I meant that.
All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for letting us speak with you this evening. My name is Catherine Burby, and I'm proud to work for the American Cancer Society. Then this is Lucy Ott, the event chair for the Relay for Life of Norfolk for 2013. A few months ago, I was approaching a checkout line in a local store, and I heard one of the cashiers mention to another woman how she had a friend who was battling cancer and having a tough time. So I introduced myself and gave her the American Cancer Society's 800 number, 1-800-227-2345, to pass on to her friend. I explained that no matter when her friend called, 24/7/365, there would always be a live person there to speak with her, give her emotional support, give her information, and talk with her about local programs and services. The other cashier then asked me to write that number down for her. She was a one-month cancer survivor, and she wanted that information so she could talk to somebody about what she was going through. I left that store so thankful that I was able to share that number with those two women that day, and everybody has the ability to share that number. Our volunteers know that, and that's why they're so passionate about getting people involved in community events like Relay for Life. It brings the community together and gives us the opportunity to fundraise and also support society programs and to reach more people and save more lives. The American Cancer Society is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. We're saving lives by helping people get well, stay well, find cures, and fighting back against cancer. We've seen amazing progress, and we're proud to be saving 400 more lives a day today than we were in the early 1990s. We're currently enrolling participants right here in Hampton Roads in a cancer research study, CPS 3, to help us better understand what prevents or what causes cancer. The American Cancer Society is going to finish the fight, and you can help.
So Relay for Life is a way for so many people to be introduced to the American Cancer Society and to learn about everything the organization has to offer. Relay isn't just an event, it's an experience. It's unlike any other fundraiser you've ever seen. It's not a run or a race. It's a community, family-friendly event that brings everyone together to celebrate our survivors, remember those we've lost, and fight back against a disease that has taken too much. We've all been affected some way. I've lost my father, and my sister is a current survivor. We all have a stake in this fight, and we can all be a part of Relay. So Relay is a community event. People form teams with family, friends, their community, their schools, their churches, businesses, and community groups. Teams fundraise leading up to the event at Relay, and they take turns walking around the track to symbolize the ongoing fight against cancer. The event starts with an opening ceremony, then our survivors and caregivers take the first lap around the track. Most people have fundraisers at their campsites, and there's entertainment on and off the stage and throughout the event. When the sun sets, there's a luminary ceremony where white bags dedicated in honor and memory of those battling cancer and those we lost line the walking path and light the way for walkers throughout the night. We relay all night because cancer never sleeps. In the morning, we'll end with a fight-back ceremony and pledge to continue the fight until the next relay event. Our relay this year will be at June 1st and 2nd Norview High School. Our goal is to raise $290,000, honor 400 survivors and caregivers, and have representation from every corner of Norfolk. We're looking for people to help the event, to help us spread the world about the event, and to recruit teams. We need people to form teams, fundraise, and people to volunteer today of the event. There is a place for everyone, no matter the amount of time or the talent you have. We're asking for your support to help us save lives. For more information, you may call 800-227-2345 or visit our website at www.relayforlife.org/norficvij. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for coming down and thanks for the presentation. The Relay for Life has been a big favorite down here for a long time. We've had council members take part in it any number of times, and you're back at Norview High School.
We are back at Norview High School.
In June this year.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Sure.
Yeah. The two years that it was at Norview High School, I was the logistics chair for the event, and I am so excited that you guys have brought it back to Norview. It had a lot of community support.
It's a big turnout, a big crowd.
And I know Marcus was not the city manager at the time, but one reason why they left Norview was because of a bad experience we had on the day of the event with the city and that a police officer, sergeant, decided to change all of the plans that we had been working on with the city that day, saying there was issues, and I hope that, and under your leadership, I know that we probably won't have those issues, that we don't have the same problems that we had. It is a logistical nightmare to get everybody in there at the time of the event, and the community does embrace it and support it, and so we want to make sure that this is a smooth event so we can continue having that there, and also those that oppose the track issue there, we want to make sure that we don't have any hurdles with that as well.
Right.
But thank you. We're glad that it's back.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for what you're doing. Okay, that concludes the ceremonial matters, and we'll move directly to public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing runs scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on January 8, 2013, to hear comments on vacating the western five feet of a 10-foot drain adjustment along the eastern property line of Lot 2, Block 5, subdivision of Sussex, also known as 604 Sterling Street, and repealing ordinance number 44813.
Okay, there are no members of the public who have signed up to address the council. On this matter, there are no questions. You can call the roll, please.
Have an ordinance vacating the western five feet of a 10-foot drain adjustment located along the eastern property line of Lot 2, Block 5, subdivision of Sussex, also known as 604 Sterling Street, in the city of Norfolk, and repealing ordinance number 44813, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The consent agenda, please. There are five items on the consent agenda. Would any member of the council like to have any one of these matters considered separately? Okay, I'll call the roll, please.
Approve the consent agenda, Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1, please. This will have a motion to withdraw, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. R1 is an ordinance approving the vacation of a certain 30-foot drain adjustment located on the south side of St. Julian Avenue between Maltby Avenue and Roberts Road, as shown on the platent titled "Subdivision of Part of Property of Globe Iron Construction Company, Inc."
All right, we're going to have to withdraw this, and then we will advertise for a public hearing on the 12th. Is that right?
Exactly.
Okay. The advertisement will go on the 12th for the, I guess, the 20th.
The hearing will be on the 12th, Mr. President.
Okay. The hearing on the 12th as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, that's right. All right, call the roll, please.
Okay, and the motion to withdraw, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2, please.
An ordinance permitting children's hospital of the King's Daughters to encroach into the right-of-way at 601 Children's Lane with two canopies and a directional sign. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit development on a non-standard width residential parcel on property located at 7409 Hugh Hart Street, and by a six vote, zero vote, Planning Commission recommends denial.
All right. There's no one here who's signed up to speak, so you can call the roll.
Dispense with the reading, dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Was the vote unanimous?
To deny, yes. Blank, zero, to deny.
That's the one that we saw last week, and that's the one I showed you earlier today that I talked to the builder on. Jay Maynard, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, what do you guys?
I'm good with it. I mean, I think, you know, I think there was some miscommunication on the part with the Civic League and the developer. We could, I mean, we could postpone it, but I'm good with it.
Yeah, Paul, if I could. R3. I've been there. I walked that. I mean, I know my ward's not very big, but I walked that, and there's some wonderful houses back there. This may be a little bit narrow, but there's nothing else there. The butts are almost right up onto the woods, if I remember. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I know that, and I respect the objection that I see. I haven't heard anything from it. I didn't get a call on it, and I really don't have a problem with the way it's set up.
I spoke to the developer on it, and I didn't have a problem. After talking to him, I think there was just a miscommunication between access information to the Civic, getting in touch with the Civic League, and, you know, just showing up at their meeting, but there, according to the builder, there wasn't a way to get in touch with the Civic League. But he indicated that while he was there, he spoke to some of the members there and the president there, that they were pretty much okay with it. He was a little surprised by their issue, yeah, by their issue at planning, but he indicated to me that they were, in general, you know, okay with it. There's a lot of new construction going on over there, and, yeah, and I mean, it's...
Those folks usually speak up when they're opposed.
You don't have any pictures or anything, do you, Frank?
The only things I had were the material I showed you at your last meeting, as council member.
And I see that one of our former planning commissioners, Nathaniel Riggins, of that Civic League.
What was the objection from Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission gave no issue with this because of this, anytime that we have a request for a special exception on a non-standard width lot, a narrow lot that has been denied because it hasn't met the requirements of the ordinance for us to issue it administratively, we're going to recommend denial unless we hear from the Civic League. In this case, we did not hear from the Civic League, except at the public hearing where the Civic League indicated they were opposed to it.
Well, there's no one, the developer's not here today?
Developer is here.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Okay.
He's here.
What is the lot width? What is the lot width? You know, I feel, what is a non-conforming?
I believe it's 35 to 38, and the minimum is 55.
The lot width is 33.
By?
By 124. It's a relatively deep lot.
And if I'm correct, Frank, it abuts woods, does it not?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's really, you know...
Very private, very nice. Construction drawing looks very nice.
It is back at the very end, south end of York.
And it abuts on to Algonquin, if I'm correct, would be the next neighborhood next door.
Yes.
33 doesn't bother me. You can get a nice...
Well, wait a minute. I'm going to make a signal. The Civic League's against it, but you say they're kind of not against it.
From my...
The planning commission was 6-0 against it, but they're kind of not against it.
No, I didn't say the planning commission was not against it. I said the planning commission did not give us a stated reason on this. I believe it was the Civic League opposition that was the basis which was presented at the planning commission public hearing.
And in my conversation with the developer, when he left the Civic League, he was under the impression that they were okay.
Well, why don't we postpone this, let him go back and get their...
I would agree, because they obviously weren't okay because they came...
They weren't okay because they came down here and opposed it.
Why don't we continue it for two weeks?
Can we see some real pictures of it?
What we'll do is, say, if we can get something in writing from the Civic League that it would clear that up and provide you a...
Public hearing and opposed it, isn't that enough for us to move forward with this? I mean, we had this argument with something that happened in my ward, and you guys said, let's vote on it. We don't want to put the construction, the developers, if they're ready to develop, if we're ready to approve this, let's move forward with it.
The developer was not able to get in touch with the Civic League president, so he went to the meeting.
Did he speak at the meeting?
He spoke to, according to what I was told, he spoke to the meeting. He was under the impression they were good. Am I misrepresenting our conversation? Okay.
Okay, that's right. I remember, I forgot that.
Okay. And thought that they were good when they left, and then one of the members from the Civic League showed up at the planning commission hearing.
Mr. Riggins.
The only thing I would caution you is, I routinely have developers tell me that the Civic League is good with it, and I get a letter after the fact, after the meeting, where the Civic League says we don't like it, and my recommendation...
Let's give it two weeks.
Would be to give it two weeks, see if we can get something in writing to clear that up.
And can they bring us some pictures in, please?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Pictures.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion's to continue for two weeks.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
No.
Dr. Wibley?
I thought we agreed after what Tommy decided, that whoever's area this is, I don't know whose area is this.
Mine and Andy's.
Okay, that you all would find out before this came.
No, this one is mine and Andy's.
You know, to find out what the Civic Leagues would want it, and so I think maybe if we continue to go ahead with that, we might avoid these kinds of delays.
I was never contacted.
No, I meant that you would notice on the agenda.
I don't have a problem voting yes right now, but the Civic League never contacted me about this at all, and I have a good rapport with that Civic League.
Yeah, me too.
I didn't hear anything from them about this.
I didn't hear anything.
I'm prepared to vote yes for this to pass right now. I'm familiar with that lot. I know where it is. I've walked those doors. I...
And I lived on York.
It abuts a woods. I'm ready to say yes to the gentleman now, regardless of what Mr. Riggins and I respect is opinion, but they haven't called me to say vote no, that we don't want it. So I'm, but I'll vote to continue it to make everyone else satisfied. I was going to vote yes, too. You had five votes to pass it.
Yeah, I would have voted yes.
Yeah.
I mean, really, it's...
Too late. I mean, I, no.
Well, the rest of you guys...
Mr. Holmes doesn't want something. He will make a phone call and let you know that he does not want something in his Civic League.
I mean, the other point that I tried to make earlier when I heard it was Titus Down, Mr. Holmes will tell you. He will get on the phone, but...
He will.
Anyway.
If you vote no on continuing it, we can vote on it.
Should I vote no?
Where are we?
My name's...
Are you Ms. Williams?
I'm Wibley.
I know you. I'm next. Where are we on those?
Two, to continue.
Okay, no.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Wait, to continue?
Yes.
You're not a jam if you, I mean, how many, how many no votes do you have?
I don't like this having to be in the hot box.
Four to three.
Three.
Four to three, Paul.
Three.
Four to three.
Vote no.
If I vote on it, we can come back and vote.
Yeah.
Mr. Riddick, could you vote on this tonight?
Yeah, I could. I'd vote no on it.
Yeah, okay. All right, then I'll vote no on the continuance, all right? Okay. All right, so let's call the vote, okay?
Okay, and so the vote on R3 to adopt the ordinance, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigiel?
Anybody, anytime we can get more people in Councilman Protogiru's ward, I'm going to favor of it. So aye.
He doesn't say anybody's going to live there.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
No.
Mr. Frame?
I vote aye.
Okay.
Okay. All right, R4.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an automobile repair facility on property located at 6581 Tidewater Drive. A six-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R4A, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an automobile sales and service establishment on property located at 6581 Tidewater Drive. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5, please.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a mixed-use building at 401 Granby Street. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Mr. Hen is here to answer questions if anybody has any. This is a beautiful project. All right.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R6.
An ordinance approving the conveyance to the city of Norfolk by the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads of a certain parcel of property bounded on the south by West Butte Street, containing approximately .115 acre of land, in exchange for the conveyance to the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads by the city of certain parcels of property bounded on the south by Curly Drive, the latter conveyance having been previously authorized by ordinance number 44502. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen? An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit the construction of a fence and additional parking at one fifty West Brambleton Avenue by seven zero vote. Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, our nine.
Eight, Mr. President.
Eight, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment on property located at eleven fifty-three Harmony Road by six zero vote. Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, our nine.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located at sixteen oh three Colley Avenue by six zero vote. Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, our ten.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located at six twenty-eight thirty-fifth Street by six zero vote. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Just a second. The applicant, Mr. Baker, is here, and we have one other member of the public who has signed up. So why don't we hear from Mr. Farrell, Seth Farrell? And then we'll come back and hear from Mr. Baker, the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you for my time here. I support what they want to do.
Your name, I'm sorry, your name is...
Ms. Seth Farwell. I own the property at six forty-two, six forty-four, thirty-fifth Street.
And your address is?
My home address is six twenty-six Connecticut Avenue.
Right.
Okay. Again, I support what they're trying to do. They're running a good business. They have a nice establishment. I feel like they're trying hard to do a good job. It is also my understanding that the parking issue that they were approved for was on-street parking only for this business. As part of the two parcels of property I own beside them, we have a parking lot that is currently they are using for their business as well as on-street parking. And my purpose here tonight is to find some way for this to be approved and enforced without me having to put up signs and have the customers towed. I'm from my lot. I'm concerned about the liability issues that their restaurant is going to cause me as soon as we turn it into a drinking establishment. I've worked with the... I've tried talking with the restaurant owners a month ago, earlier today, and then tonight before this meeting. I didn't want this to end up with me having to address this publicly, and I'm getting nowhere as far as anything from them. What I'm asking them to do is simply put up no parking signs, put up a sign at their front door requesting that people don't park on my side of the parking lot, and to extend their liability insurance policy on their restaurant to cover outside parking in the event that people continue to park there. What they're doing is they're leaving me wide open liability-wise by allowing their customers to park on my property.
Is your property a vacant lot?
Yes, sir, it is. My property... I have a picture which I'd be happy to bring up to you that shows the situation. May I?
Let me see that. I guess you can start it down that way.
Thirsty gate in front of the property lot roughly five feet off the west side of the Cars that are in the parking lot are on my parking lot, on my side of the lot.
The building?
So their side is what?
Their side is about five feet off of that.
Frank, can you...
From here to here. From here to here.
Well, they don't actually own that.
Wait, wait, wait.
He owns the building? Wait, we're trying to figure out the next door. He's next door.
Is where the cars are, okay.
Picture was taken today.
Okay.
This afternoon at about four thirty-five.
All right. Is it Farrell? I'm Farwell. Farwell, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Baker, Randy Baker?
If I could, Paul, let me ask him.
Sure.
Mr. Farwell, just so I can better understand it, you're the property next door.
Yes, sir.
If you put up, and you're afraid that people will park on your property that are going to come to this establishment, is that what I understand? And that it will extend liability to you for some reason?
Yes, sir.
All right. Have you checked with your attorney or your insurance agent with the discussed liability extending to you for that?
We live in a pretty litigious society. People go over anything.
Well, I don't think so. Because I don't know what liability you're thinking unless there's just... Second, the issue is, have you put up... How about signs that say parking towing enforced? And then it's automatically towed? That works?
It does, but what I don't want to do is to have their customers towed. I like their business. I want their business to succeed, and I don't want to be the guy that has their customers towed. I will do that if I need to, but I think that that's not in their best interest. I'm hoping that we could come up with a resolution before it got to that point.
Well, I...
But I don't think we have the ability to do that.
You can't have it that you want them to be there and then say...
I don't want them to be there. I don't want them to be there.
Then put up signs.
Okay.
The fenced-in area is not yours.
Yes, sir, the fenced-in area is mine. The fenced-in area belongs to two people.
I know, I know, look.
You know that property, I believe.
One of the lots belongs to Richard Levin.
That is correct.
Okay? So you're trying to tell me that this fixed-in area belongs to you and Richard Levin?
I'm trying to tell you that the side of that fenced-in area that customers for that restaurant are parking on in that picture belongs to me.
Okay, he has the other side?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And people can park on that side?
Who put the fence down?
The fence was there for years. That property was sold through the city.
We can't make the owner get liability insurance and all that extra stuff. We can't do that.
No, I understand that. What I am asking is to reiterate the fact that the approval is based on on-street parking only.
Yeah, we can reiterate it all day long, but you've got to put up some signs.
Let's mean, what are the... Thank you, Mr. Farwell. We're going to ask Mr. Duke some things. What...
This is the business. This is the business. Richard Levin owns this.
What are the parking requirements?
Half of the parking lot.
They would need eleven parking spaces based on their seating. This is the first I've heard that the parking lot is divided. By code, you cannot count on-street parking toward meeting their parking requirements. So if we have this issue where it appears this establishment may not be meeting code requirements, we need to have the opportunity to do additional research on this to...
Was it misrepresented to you that they own that lot?
The representation that we had was that the parking was available for the restaurant. Yes, sir.
Mean the entire lot?
That lot?
Okay.
And we would now have to go back through and...
No, no, that would have been true because at the time, Mr. Farwell didn't own this lot, okay? That would have been true.
Okay.
Okay, so they didn't misrepresent themselves. Mr. Farwell bought this lot at a tax auction, okay? And so Richard Levin owned the other lot and the adjacent building to it. So that would have been correct.
There's still... Wait a minute, Mr. Farwell.
He owns Richard Levin.
Richard Levin did not own that property. He bought that property a few days after I bought my property.
Okay, but you didn't own your property. You didn't buy... Excuse me, let me correct. You didn't buy yours at an auction. You bought it from the... No, you bought it from the attorney.
As did Mr. Levin.
Okay? And so, again, just a matter of two days apart, you guys acquired two pieces of property. Prior to that, you didn't own it, nor he owned it. And we always sold property to the adjacent landowner. So that's why you able to get that sliver, and that's why he was able to get the sliver that he had. But prior to that, that... They did not misrepresent themselves, and they were parking there legally.
That's okay. All right, look, wait a minute, guys.
Why were they parking?
They were parking on the entire lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They didn't know.
Which... But let's get... Mr. Baker, why don't you come on up? And Mr. Farwell, have a seat. And then Frank, if in fact we have an issue with the number of spaces, we'll have to address that.
All right, how y'all doing?
And we need your name and address, please.
Randy Baker. My home address is seven zero zero nine Adele Court, Norfolk, Virginia.
Okay.
All right, first of all, far as with the parking, thirty-fifth Street is grandfathered zone for on-street parking. So I never misrepresented myself because I have thirty-fifth Street.
Please don't take any offense on that. I mean, that's... He didn't mean to be offended.
No, I'm not offending me. I'm just correcting it because when I went through zoning, they never used the parking lot for my zoning, for my parking space because it's grandfathered for on-street parking. Secondly, with Mr. Farrell, he came to me and asked me to split an assurance bill with him. And being that I refused it, he said, "Well, I'm going to come to your city council meeting and oppose," you know what I'm saying, "you're going to be a nuisance because I wouldn't split a bill with him." But I'm telling him, I don't own the property. Mr. Levin owned the property. I only leased the property. So when I leased the property, that fenced-in area was a part of, you know, was available. I'm not the only one who used this parking lot. The theater across the street, they used the parking lot, you know, because it's a fenced-in parking lot, and the customers, they don't... They worry about people breaking in their cars. I got camera systems over the parking lot, so it protected people, you know, to surround the businesses. But this opposed... This is only because I went and split a bill with him. I asked him to call Mr. Levin. I contacted Mr. Levin. I said, "Have he contacted you?" He only contacted Mr. Levin trying to sell the property. He never mentioned nothing about the trespassing thing or nothing. I'm like, "Talk to Mr. Levin. He's the owner, you know? I'm not... I only leased the property." And that's the only thing I really wanted to address.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Mr. Duke? Okay, maybe things have changed since the application was made.
And...
When was the sale... When the sale took place?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
November, okay.
Things have changed, but I've been in touch with my staff while we're here, and they are grandfathered, given the parking requirement, four thirty-fifth Street, which is different from the rest. So they do have enough parking without the full lot.
Right, okay. And their application is September.
Their application was complete and correct at the time it was submitted. That's why I'm saying that I, based on these changes of circumstances, my initial reaction was, "We have an issue." That's why I immediately contacted my staff, and they have told me, yes, they're aware of the issue, but they have adequate parking based on what has been grandfathered there without the full lot.
Okay, so they get half the lot to park in and on the street? And if you want to put up a fence to prohibit people from...
One more time?
Okay, real quick, Mr. Baker, because I think you're winning, so I wouldn't...
The address is incorrect also. That's on the agenda. It's the address... The correct address is six three six West Thirty-Fifth Street. They have the wrong address.
Okay.
Wrong parking rule.
It's the wrong thing.
This is actually what caused me to first contact staff. According to city records, the correct address is six twenty-eight, though they're... They may get mail at six thirty-six, but what we always use is the address shown on city records for the ordinance.
Okay, anybody... Is everybody ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm ready to vote. You know, while I agree, I vote yes on a lot of alcohol applications in other communities. When it comes to fragile communities like this, I'm very sensitive to it, and that I was concerned. But I think that Mr. Baker is going to do the right thing, so... But I am concerned about ABC because there hasn't been an ABC on Thirty-Fifth Street in years. They had Row and Twenties there, then you had Page Two, which was right there at Thirty-Fifth and Colley. But there had been no alcohol on Thirty-Fifth Street, and when it comes in our fragile communities, it really concerns me, but I think I'm going to go along with it.
So they're having... They're going to have the same hours, but they're just going to have some outdoor eating on this? This is the main change from this?
Actually, on a special exception, as you can see, we're not going to be able to sell alcohol past the... It's not going to be like a line.
Right. No, what I... What I asked is that... What I asked is that the hours are staying the same. The difference is that there's going to be outdoor seating for the restaurant now.
In the future.
That's what they've...
In addition to the alcohol.
Okay. Okay.
I thought you said you were ready. Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I think that this gentleman, Mr. Farwell, I hope I'm saying that right. I think that on your side of the property, you can put up... If you really don't want people there, put up your towing enforced, make that happen. I think that the business, of course, will have to let its patrons know, park only on the one side. That happens. I will tell you, I went to this establishment, and I was really... It was a wonderful place.
It's a nice place.
It really... Yeah, it's a tremendous place. The interior is phenomenal. And in fact, I will say, I was kind of disappointed that all I had was, I think, iced tea and lemonade. That was my only choices. And I would have really liked to have gotten a beer. That being said, I think that it will be very successful. I was bragging about this particular restaurant after I'd been there, and I think it would work, and I think that you can have harmony with the neighbors. The neighbors will have to do what they do. I think you all can work it out, and that it'll be best for everybody, and it'll be best for the city. But I think in the end, you've really got a... You've got a great thing going there, and make sure it stays. So I vote aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, I'm going to vote aye as well, and I also hope that Mr. Baker is very successful with this. Just be mindful that they have a boss squad that, you know, that goes around and targets certain restaurants. And so you just make sure that now that you have ABC, that you keep everything really tight. You know, one thing that I did see that concerned me, the exits were like in the kitchen area. You had two or three exits back there, but only one exit, you know, in the front part of there.
We have a full sprinkler system installed. So that's why we was able to be approved by the building. Because we had a full sprinkler system installed. If we wouldn't have had the full sprinkler system installed, we would have had to put an extra door.
Right, okay.
But we had it installed, so if anything was to occur, it would...
But thank you for that explanation. I vote aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
I've been in there too, and I was, you know, the food's great. It's a little crisp, but I mean, it was great. And I hope y'all are able to work this out. I mean, if you really don't want them over there, you could fence it off. I mean, there are ways to do that, but, you know, I mean, well, you know, most property owners put up their own signs. So, I mean, you know, we could pass the hat here tonight and probably take care of this, so... But in any event, I vote aye. Best of luck to you down there as well. Maybe we'll have a meeting down there one day, and you can...
I'm just glad he didn't have his signs up that night we were there because I'd have got... You'd have told me because I parked on your side.
Everyone knows...
I was on the street. There's plenty of... Anyway, that's okay.
Loss control.
Okay. Our... Thanks. Our eleven.
Resolution approving the terms and conditions of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement by and among the cities of Chesapeake, Franklin, Hampton, Newport, New York, Norfolk, Porco, San Port, Suffolk, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, Williamsburg, the counties of Akamak, James City, Gloucester, Isle of Wight, Northampton, Surrey, York, and the towns of Smithfield and Windsor. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our twelve.
An ordinance to amend rare dane sections twenty-four dash two oh four through two oh nine point one of the city code. So as to amend the general eligibility requirements for exemption and deferral, change the annual affidavit procedure, change the schedules of exemption and deferral, and add the limitation on the amount of tax exemption and deferral.
Okay, and this matter's going to be... We're going to move to continue it till February the twelfth. There's no one who signed up to speak on this matter, is there? I mean, I hope you didn't come down here to... Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I please, the better form might be to withdraw it since we might bring it back as a public hearing.
Okay, that's even better.
Yeah.
The motion is to withdraw then, and we will bring it back in two weeks as a public hearing. Okay.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, our thirteen.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Amsec LLC of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents plus interest based upon the correction of business license tax assessments for tax years two thousand nine through two thousand twelve. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R 14.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to USGC Inc. of $10,432.85 plus interest based on overestimation of gross receipts for 2011. Dispense with the charter requirement, freeing the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R 15.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Cardiology Consultants Limited of $39,250.64 plus interest based on its sale to Centerra Medical Group. Dispense with the charter requirement, freeing the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
This is the way of the future here.
I mean, the money that has been left behind here is.
Is huge, and it's difficult for me to understand, very frankly. I support these, Cardiology Group, I support Centerra, but for me to have the same business that they have and I pay taxes and they don't is difficult for me to swallow. I vote aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R 16.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Sunrise Apartments LLC of certain property located in the city of Norfolk for the sum of $210,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $220,000 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs.
This is a no vote. Rebecca Luce? Rebecca, you gonna be against this again?
Comes around, goes around. Rebecca Luce, 409 San Antonio Boulevard, Norfolk. Thank you all for R 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. When I called the city council office today to find out where the properties were, I looked them up. It's a huge chunk that's gonna be a terrific furnace. We really, really appreciate it. The crime has gone down in the neighborhood, and we have a terrific police presence. God owns a house across the street, came up to me today. He said, what are you doing? I said, it's not me. We have terrific city council. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You've changed your tune, Rebecca, I mean. Didn't always.
Are there many residents that had to be relocated?
I think all these are empty.
I thought they were.
No, they're not totally empty, but we've made provisions for relocating all these just as we did with the other properties that we bought. So that nothing will be done until everybody's got.
All right, thank you.
Right, I mean, we're not relocating them? I mean, we've agreed to purchase them, but they'll be, they're gonna be empty when we.
Honor their lease.
Right, I understand that, but I'm.
Yes, sir, we're, after council's consideration and action this evening, we'll be working with the property owners to determine what their rent rolls are and working with any residents or tenants that need relocation assistance.
Make sure you're not adversely affecting other communities and putting them in high census poverty tracks.
Absolutely. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement, freeing the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Brock Creek.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R 17.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Christopher C. Calagritis of certain property located in the city of Norfolk for the sum of $74,900 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $84,900 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement, freeing the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R 18.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Alan A. Arroyo of certain property located in the city of Norfolk for the sum of $410,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $420,000 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement, freeing the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R 19.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Sunrise Apartments LLC of certain property located in the city of Norfolk for the sum of $336,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $346,000 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement, freeing the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R 20.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Sunrise Apartments LLC of certain property located in the city of Norfolk, known and numbered and designated as 308 East Little Creek Road for the sum of $420,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $430,000 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement, freeing the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Paul, before I bonus, can I say something? I feel blessed to use the, what my colleague, Mr. Burford, often says is I want to thank the administration for doing what they've done here and making this happen. It really has been, I know, and Terry has worked hard on this and where it has put us at Ward's Corner, and it's been a great partnership. The one thing that I think people need to understand is that, you know, this is, the purchase prices that were negotiated in this were negotiated from a very strong position on behalf of the city, and that we're here not just purchasing buildings to tear them down and to bank the property. And I think that there's a misconception out there that some people may think we just want to own property and sit on it. That's not what we're looking to do here. We're looking to be able to clean out some of the property from ills that we've had in the past, from poor planning, from buildings that unfortunately did foster a sense of insecurity for the residents and not only lived there, but also lived around these particular apartments, and it's most unfortunate. I do believe that it's important to understand that we have done well in the negotiation. We were, as the administration was, excellent stewards of the city's money in the sense of protecting it and getting the purchase prices that are most appropriate in this case. And I think people need to understand that in the future, we look to following what the plan is at Ward's Corner. This is a corridor between Southern Shopping Center and Ward's Corner that is a strong viable community, but also can be a strong viable commercial corridor, whether it's per the Ward's Corner plan, whether it's a hotel, whether it's some type of commercial development, whether it's other residential. It will work, but I think that citizens need to be a little bit patient. And I say patient because don't expect tomorrow a box store is gonna come in and is a target. Don't expect tomorrow that there are gonna be private homes going up. I believe that at some point, a partnership between the city with continued purchase in that area, a partnership with a commercial developer that wishes to come in and make something happen and purchase either all the remaining or a portion of these properties will come to fruition in the near future.